He's right there.
Just a minute. There's Terry now.
Sorry for being late.
That's all right. I just texted you.
Just two minutes.
You're here early.
Huh?
Usually you're here early.
Here early?
Usually you are.
Yes, usually I am. I had to, they had trouble finding something at the bank. Cash.
They've lost their millions.
Cash is a problem.
Yeah, cash is a problem.
All right. Are we on? All right, that's, we'll go ahead and start. I know David is going to be a little late. And Steve, I'm sure will be here shortly, so. This is our beginning of one of our budget, annual budget meetings with a combination of our monthly budget too, but I thought we'd go over our annual budget. And first off is, I don't know if anybody's, I thought we'd just go through the beginning and if anybody had any questions on the non-departmental budget. We're about $15,000 addition over in 2025 as opposed to 24. And that's mostly, I think, probably in taxes and other miscellaneous items through there. So. Anybody got any questions on the non-departmental?
You say it went to 15 instead of 10, what we have here?
Beg your pardon?
It went to 15 instead of 10, what we have here?
We're about 15,000 over last year, I think.
In, in preparing the budget for 2025, you're not going to see a huge difference from 2024. You're going to see some categories are moved around quite a bit, but as far as like overall numbers, we did not project a lot of huge increases or anything. We tried to be as conservative as possible. So a lot of them, you're going to see that their 20 to 24 budget to 25 just goes up a little bit or down a little bit. But the thing that he's talking about, like in our overall revenue for our non-departmental, last year our budget was 5.9 million, oh seven. This year it's 5.931. So we didn't have a lot of change there. We projected a small increase in our sales tax operating based upon what we're seeing now in our 2024 budget. We're going to easily hit our 2024 budget and probably exceed it. So going up from 2.465 to 2, 2.5 is not a huge, huge jump. Excuse me. We tried to be more, pull things back. If we had over projected in 24 and weren't meeting those expectations, we, we tried to pull that back some. And then in our expenses for non-departmental, in the, on page four, you'll see it went from 1.2 million down to 1 million. So we were able to cut some expenses there. And some of it has, some of it's even not even cutting expenses. It's realigning the way we're accounting some things. The legislative audit suggestions that they've made. Page five, you see the mayor's office went from 270 down to 267. Because we realigned some salaries and some things there.
Question on, back to page two.
Yes, sir.
I see we've lowered the proposed budget for grease trap inspections from 500 to 250, or is that from the amended last year's?
What line is that?
That is 1004084. On page two.
The reason, like if you see our year-to-date balance of 1031 2024, we only collected $50 so far this year. So we had budgeted.
That's not because we didn't do the inspections. It's because they were doing self-inspections. And we're not charging for doing self-inspection and self-recording. So that's, that's the point on there.
May I ask, what is a self-inspection?
Well, I'm going to have to bow to building inspector because that's something that our last building inspector initiated last year, or year before last. And so they're not and Autumn may be able to.
It's not being done.
Well, you're not, you're not self-inspecting yourself?
Well, where's their paper that says we're self-inspecting?
The building, the, the person who does the grease inspections, I think is supposed to be submitting a report to us. I think that's the.
That's kind of like having an inspector cluseau do it.
Well, I mean, but I think that's the reason for this. We've always had, even when Bobby Ray was doing it, we didn't have a lot of he was doing a lot of depending on the person doing the grease traps.
I think every pers, every restaurant in town has a grease trap. If that gives you an idea.
It's just whether they're cleaned out regularly.
Well, but that doesn't even have anything to do with the inspection. We get ours cleaned out every three months, if that.
Not, not every restaurant has a grease trap.
Not everyone? Okay, yeah. You don't? Okay.
We're not required to have one.
Okay.
We don't cook with grease. We don't do anything like that.
Yeah, if you don't do any fries, frying or anything, you don't have a grease trap. All right.
I think it's something that needs to be put back onto the building inspector again.
Well, we can, we can get that taken care of. That's, yeah, I'll look into that one.
Also, why is it even a thing? Why are it's like inspecting a toilet tank? You know?
I just like, I think the idea is keep grease out of the sewer plant.
I think, I think the state has a requirement on that too, but.
The state, the state has a requirement that you have to have it. Now, I don't, I don't know what the requirements are for inspectors. That's again, going back to, like you said, it's like looking, make sure you got water in your, your toilet tank.
Yeah, yeah.
Because a lot of these grease traps are under the sink. They're not.
Yeah, in the smaller places. That's right. They're in, right, there's.
And I think that where we're, you may say it's a fox garden hen house, but that's our best way of, of making sure that the grease trap inspections and if, and I can't think of the guy's name who does it. But if he's saying he's inspecting, he doesn't do it, he's liable. That's a, that's a penalty. I mean, that gets into, you know, perjury felony case. So he's going to be telling us whatever needs to be done. So I don't have a problem with that. But I'll look into that more.
So when you look at these individual departments, your salaries and wages, this is assuming a 5% increase on everyone that's in their current department, which is a 3% cost of living and a 2% merit raise, and that's the department heads decide on that 2%. The other things that you'll notice in some of the departments, a huge increase in is workman's compensation and our employee health insurance and protection, because those did go up quite a bit this year. And so in some of them, if it's a small department and there's not very many employees, you won't see much difference. But if there's a bunch of employees in the department, you'll see a huge difference in those numbers.
What page are you on, Michael? Sorry.
And we're just kind of looking at the first four or five pages right now. We're, we're on, we just got through the mayors, looking at the mayors. Do you want to start with like transit?
Oh, on page four, the passport parking fees. Do we pay the company that handles the passport? Is that what that 40,000 is for? Okay.
Yes, it is. And if you'll look on the income for that, that is going to be on, excuse me, page two, and it's going to be 4110 is when we rent out certain parts of the parking space for events and stuff. 4111 is passport. And then 4113 is the coin meter ones.
Right.
So we're looking at about 145, 135, 145,000 dollars is how much that parking lot's bringing in on passport. And then the passport fees are what we pay them for that.
Understand.
And to be sure too, we don't, we collect that fee. It costs 25 cents to use the passport and the person using the passport pays it. And then they pay us. And so what we do is resubmit, basically. So it's not costing us anything. Follow me?
No. I thought that.
Every time you use passport, it's going to cost you 25 cents.
Extra.
Extra. If it's a dollar, it's a dollar twenty-five.
All right.
If it's two dollars, it's two dollars and twenty-five. If it's 10 dollars, it's 10 dollars and twenty-five cents. That 25 cents gets reimbursed back to passport as their fee.
Gotcha.
Now we're on page four. The auditorium insurance, so 5727. And then 5739, just right underneath that. First, the auditorium insurance, we didn't have any coming through this year, but our amended budget is still 17, and then the proposed is even more at 19.
Okay, so the reason why the insurances don't show up in 24, Tabby was new and we get that bill in about October. And we have till the end of January to play, pay it, but she didn't understand that and she paid it in December of last year. So we paid for 24, all of our 24 insurers in 23.
In 23?
Yes. And so we've got that all settled now. So we went ahead and left it in our budget because we knew it wasn't an item that was going away. And so this 199, we now have the bill for 2025, what it's going to cost us, but we won't pay that until January.
Okay.
And of course, all insurance has gone up.
Yes.
Well, and the restoration, is that, are we just, is that supposed to purposely let blank or?
That was, we had set aside money to repair and restore the restroom, and now we've pretty much moved that up to public restroom expense and utilities.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because since the project's done.
Yeah. That was a big project.
Yeah.
Just a side note, I heard that Pendergrass Corner is graffitiing up horribly again.
Yep.
Pendergrass Corner's got terrible graffiti on it. And we're trying to figure out what to do on it. And I'm at the point where I'm probably going to put up $250 of my own money and offer a reward for anybody caught and convicted on it. We're having the police try to patrol it more often. We're shutting the bathrooms down earlier. But it's obviously still coming up and
Yeah.
It's amazing how people vandalize.
I don't, I don't, I don't understand the mindset. It's just beyond me.
And it's not only Chelsea's, it's here on, on Main Street as well. So we're now shutting it down at dark unless it's a busy weekend.
Down at the music park, they're, they're pretty clean.
Music parks get shut down early.
Like the rest of them.
From, from talking to everyone, Harmon Park is not having an issue and the music park is not having an issue. The three main issues are Pendergrass Corner, the auditorium, and the gazebo by the Basin Park. And it seems to be the same taggers who are tagging it because they're using the same thing. So the police are beefing up their patrols. They're going to start patrolling the bathrooms and going in and actually looking. Now that's.
Cameras?
That's what I was thinking.
We're getting ready to put cameras.
I mean.
You can't put cameras on the inside.
Outside, that's the damn thing.
Well, we have. But we are putting cameras on the exterior.
Yep.
Hoping that might.
If the same graffiti is going elsewhere, like at the gazebo, we can have a camera there.
Yeah.
But a lot of the gazebo, a lot of the graffiti is not with, with spray paint anymore, but it's actually with some sort of a felt marker.
I know.
So you can't tell whether or not they're carrying anything to.
It's like a grease pen or something.
Mark it up.
We're also looking into a paint that you can actually paint with that is resistant to graffiti. So if they put that, the paint on and stuff, it is easier to wash off. But it would be, it'll be quite an investment and something we've got to look at.
That's Terry.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, this is moving on a little bit here to the yellow bags and tags. We still don't need to sell yellow bags, right?
We left that in there because we do sell tags.
Okay.
And we do have yellow bags left, and some people do still like to use the yellow bags. So we left that in there. We just reduced it quite a lot.
Okay.
Butch? 101-105571, professional services legal for the mayor's office. Is that, is that municipal league?
Probably a combination of both. Most of it's municipal league. Which, which?
5571, professional services legal for 21,000. Yes, that is municipal league or court cases.
Although you do realize that force does not prosecute. And we have to have, anytime we have anybody prosecuted, we have to either get Clint to do it and hire him to prosecute. So.
Sure. I just thought our dues.
Or just strictly city council ordinances and stuff.
So where is the municipal league dues in our budget? We have to pay two dues.
We pay them $3,000 every time we get sued, every time they accept a lawsuit.
So it doesn't cost the city to be a member of the municipal?
Oh, we do have, probably under dues and subscriptions.
Yeah, that's going to be, it could, I'm not sure exactly where that's at, but it could be under his professional services, 5572, right underneath it, or.
But yes, it does cost us to belong to the municipal league.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Yeah.
Look into that and see where that's actually paid out of.
And what did you say about the salaries and wages? Thing would have an increase?
Yes, every department, what we do is we do a pretty extensive spreadsheet on every department that has all the current employees listed in it, what they're currently making, what a 5% increase would look like. Figure out how much the new taxes will be, how much their new retirement, because they're never putting in retirement, how much the new retirement is. We figure out in Public Works, we have it, where are they? A third, a third, a third? Are they half, half? Are they one whole department? So we do a pretty extensive worksheet on all of the salaries, wages, retirement, you're in the health insurance and the payroll. Then we have our payroll, I mean, our sorry, payroll taxes. And we do that for every department. We estimate a 5% raise for every employee that we currently have so that if, you know, if that does happen, we're not under budget on, on salaries.
But it's 30 to 40,000 dollars for each one, really.
Well, like when some of them.
They're all separated out too. Retirement contribution.
Right.
Workers' comp, so that's not included in just the salary.
Just the salary, no, just the salary, just the wages. Just the wages.
Have we added more employees or like just to the?
Some departments we have. We have added different employees. We have moved employees around. Like in the salaries and wages under mine, I used to have three employees at Public Works. I now have two. We used to have an extra person that was in my AP. We don't have them now. So it's, a lot of that has to do with employees being moved around.
You have two employees at Public Works instead of three?
Yes.
Well, is there anybody in the Public Works office that just works for Public Works?
Do what? Yeah, Simon has the whole crew.
No, in the office?
No.
That you took over?
No.
So are you, I don't see any maintenance for that building that you took over on your, in your budget?
Because it's split between Public Works and between the building department, because it's still the Public Works Department building.
They're still collecting water and water bills and information. People still come there.
Yeah, isn't that finances job, collecting money?
It's always been under the water, water department.
That's why there's two employees for public, for finance in that department because they collect the money. And he's taken over the entire building except for the basement. So I would think that there should be some maintenance to the building or utilities or something there in finance. It only makes sense. I mean, finance.
Also on finance, there's a, so there's three employees, between three employees, they're drawing down 265.
No.
Income.
In the finance department, you have me, you have Tabby, you have the front desk, and you have Jerry.
So there's four of you.
And then you have, then I pay half the salaries for the two employees at Public Works.
Okay.
So I have.
So there's six of you all together. Two part-time.
All right, you pay half those salaries, I see.
Right.
Well, speaking of salary and wages, did the police department get more people?
Well, let's stick with, let's stick with our.
I got you.
Does anybody else have any comments on, on non-departmental?
Oh, okay, we're back there.
For the mayor's office.
Okay.
No. All right. And now we're going right into the police. Their finance. Anybody have any other questions on finance?
I think we got those answered.
All right, if not, we'll jump into the, the police department. Billy, you want to come up here? I don't know whether we got any questions or not, but just in case.
What are step wages? PD step wage.
Step wages is a federal reimbursement program that we belong to. I don't know exactly what STEP stands for. Step wages, STEP.
But we, we pay that. Oh, it's reimbursed by the state. So it shows it as an expense, but it'll be here, accredited here someplace.
What's HIDTA wages?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Can't hear you. Is, is your mic off?
That's another grant we get through Homeland Security.
Terry, if you'll look at on page three of 01004510, you'll see the PD STEP grant revenue, which is $30,000. And then that's what we're proposing as income coming in from that. And then 0112, 5,008 is the PD STEP wages. And then 5308 is PD STEP supply, STEP supplies and equipment for the other 5,000.
I see.
So whatever we, whatever he spends in that, we submit it to the state and the state reimburses us. Brian always carried a higher amount, but we didn't ever get to that amount. So that's why Billy decided to lower it. But yeah, it's an offset.
But this is Billy's first budget.
Second?
Second.
I got to finish up the first one.
Yeah.
Well, I see, I see gasoline has gone up to 45,000. Are you sure we need to provide them cars? To go home?
Actually, we spent this year 38,000. We are at, at the end of October, we're at 38,000 and we're proposing 40,000 for 2025 for fuel. Or 45,000 for fuel and 40,000 for operating on the vehicles.
We talked about adding cameras. Was that added in here?
We did, yes. And we've had to add some on our IT because of them, because of storage space and things like that. So our IT budget's gone up quite a bit this year.
Was there something else too you were going to implement?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't there something else you were going to implement, the cameras and?
We put dash cams on them instead of just the body cams. We actually have them in and on the outside.
Good.
So on this, the drug fund expense, what kind of drugs are your employees using?
That's confidential.
I just was curious.
No comment, no comment, Terry. So back to the salaries and wages, did you get new people?
We got one. We got Angelo this year.
Yeah?
Downtown bike cop, well, bike officer. He's not a cop. He's not.
They're regular cops. They're just in shape, really good shape.
Yeah.
What's a STEP wage?
So that's the, that's what's paid for by the state. That's for our, certain times of the year, we can do extra patrols like click it or ticket or the DWI enforcement. And the state will pay overtime for that. So that comes back from the state.
What is the translation of HIDTA?
It's a good question. I know it's Homeland Security.
It's not Holiday Island?
No, has nothing to do with Holiday.
Driving to Arkansas.
Hyda is actually the name of the, it's the name of the grant and I, I can't.
All right.
He's making up his own stuff now.
So those of you who are asking, STEP is selective traffic enforcement program.
Thank you.
All you have to do is Google it. You'll find it.
What is it called? Selective?
Transportation Enforcement Program, so.
I see there's plenty of money for traffic stuff, so we do have enough money in that part of the budget for the same kind of electronic speed warning radar thing on East Mountain, don't we?
The other thing to look at when you're looking at the police is also if you'll look on page 17, these are our capital expenditures. So the capital expenditures for the police department consists of $107,000, which is for two new Durangos and for outfitting those cars.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. What page is that on?
Page 17.
Okay.
We'll be going back and forth to that. That's our capital expenditure.
HYDA is the high intensity drug trafficking area. So the.
We have a high intensity drug trafficking.
Well, what, what it does is connects us with the federal government so we don't have to stay right directly in the city limits. But it also pays our guys overtime to work their cases, so.
You didn't answer my question.
No, I don't think we're a high traffic area right here.
No, I mean, do we have money in the budget?
Oh, for the speed signs?
Yeah.
That would be up to you guys, if you guys want to order them.
Well, it's in the budget. I mean, there's enough money in the budget for it.
I don't, I think actually, I don't know where the money came from last year, but I need a budget for it.
It's not in your budget, but it's, it's.
Not specified, no.
It's there.
We need sidewalks. I said, we just need sidewalks, Harry.
Well, a sidewalk.
That's the root of the problem.
Sidewalk on East Mountain would help a whole lot.
Yeah, that and pivot. Yeah, that and pivot, so people aren't dying.
Keep people from getting hit while they're walking.
Yeah.
Of course, they wouldn't use the sidewalk to begin with.
Maybe true.
If there was a decent sidewalk, they would.
Because I've pulled half the people up there, and half of them want the sidewalk and half of them don't.
No.
Or the one half died.
They get ran over?
Out there.
I think so, yeah.
I appreciate you keeping your overtime low.
We tried.
That'll eat your lunch.
Lot of obstacles this year, but we tried to keep it down.
Yep.
And also to complement on that, also, it would have been lower, but we had the situation to where we had two officers off with the shooting, and so we had to have some people pull some overtime hours. So that's even the reason why it's as high as it is, so he has done a real good job on his overtime.
Of your 20 employees, how many of them are officers that patrol?
We have 13 officers in me, including detectives.
Do we still have a parking?
We do.
That's Angelo?
We, yeah, that's Angelo.
And?
And as of next week, we'll have another downtown officer certified.
You'll have what?
We'll have another certified officer downtown. We've, we've had a lot of turnover this year, so we're back to full staff as of next week.
Nice, okay.
Yeah.
Big feet in Eureka.
All right, I'm gonna go to you.
Any other questions for Billy?
No, no more.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Any questions on Municipal Court, because it's pretty well.
Why is its overtime more than doubling there?
So in previous years, we have not counted overtime with them, and there's quite a bit of overtime that has been ran up there. And so in 2024, we decided to start counting it as a separate category. So this will truly be our first year to actually track it. But we wanted to track it and just see how much overtime they have, because we do have a lot of overtime up there.
I appreciate you breaking it out more. This is really, it's been a huge change, even in the four years that I've been here, and what we were looking at in the beginning, and I really appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
If nothing else, we'll jump over to the fire and EMS. Gary's here.
Hello.
Is Dr. Cressy still your medical director?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that you'll see that we added to Gary's budget, if you'll go down to the bottom of the page, page nine, on 0114-5590, small equipment purchase. We jumped that up quite a bit, and the reason why is because continually Gary has to come every year and ask for capital money to replace some of his equipment. And so, and he can get more into what that is, so his protective equipment. So instead of making it a capital expenditure every year, he has asked that we move it to a line item, because it's going to be more of an annual expense as he goes through the next few years of trying to replace that protective equipment. So that's one of the reasons why there's a jump in that one, that shows kind of a large jump.
Is that SCBA's and turnouts, or just?
Mostly just turnouts. The SCBA's, the bottles will expire at 15 years, but the turnout gear, the coats, pants, boots, those expire every 10 years.
How long?
Every 10 years. It doesn't matter if they've been used 100 times, or if they're sitting brand-new on a shelf. Once they hit that 10-year mark, we have to throw them away, according to the NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association. Additionally, any damage that's, that happens to this equipment, there's no, there's no fixing it. Once it's, there's a breach in the gear at all, it has to be disposed of and has to be replaced.
What is public safety volunteers?
That is the group of volunteers that work alongside with us, that is.
The volunteer firemen?
Yes.
And what is that, what is that expense for? It says public safety volunteers, what's that?
Are you referring to the?
It's a line item here.
Thirty, is it thirty-five thousand?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand? That is the money that we pay them to reimburse them for their time and their gas, and whenever they're on calls or come to meetings or for training.
I didn't know we started doing that.
We've been doing it now for, well, we didn't do it for a long time. We did recently increase it about two or three years ago, because volunteerism had been down. So as an incentive, we started reimbursing them for their time.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember it. I don't remember ever seeing that before, ever, but I could be wrong. I could have been lax and missed it, but I didn't know we were paying volunteers or volunteers just like they were when I volunteered for 20 years.
Unfortunately, across the nation, we're seeing a decline in volunteerism, and as an incentive, we've kind of got to throw them a little bit of a bone to try to get them out a little more often. How often do you, do you require a volunteer or one? They're required to attend one meeting a month, that's on the first Wednesday, one training a month that is in person. And they're also required to have as many as 196 hours of training hours a year, according to ISO. Now, NFPA only requires that that number is 16 hours. So anything above that 16 hours, we're grateful for. But, but they are required to get the 16, the 16 hours, I'm sorry, 16 hours per year.
What sort of training maintenance do you currently have?
Training maintenance?
Like what kind of training are you putting them through on a monthly or a yearly, or you name it?
It changes from year to year, but a lot of things that we do consistently every year is, is kind of seasonally oriented. We know in, for instance, in the wintertime, we see more flu fires and structured fires, because people are heating their homes with gas or wood heat. In the summertime, we train more with extrication, have a lot of tourists in town, traffic is a lot worse. So we, we do training with rope rescue and extrication tools.
Pump operation.
Pump operation is something that's done every year, engine company operations, truck company operations.
Hose tests.
Hose testing, pump tests. There's, there's a lot of things that go into.
Flyer hire.
And the crews are, they do train every day.
Okay.
The crews train every day, and then every month, we try to incorporate the volunteers into the training that we're doing.
Yeah, I could see a volunteer coming once a month to a training is already, that's quite a bit.
And then to ask them to do more on top of that.
Yeah.
And we were to get full ISO points for the training portion in their evaluation. To ask every single person to get 196 hours that are volunteer is a, that's a daunting amount of hours to ask of somebody in a year's time.
Yeah. Did you add any more people to your payroll?
No, we, we didn't lose anybody, and we didn't add anybody.
So these are raises here?
We are adding a person to his payroll. We're offering, we're adding an office manager.
Okay, I wasn't aware that, I wasn't aware that that.
Surprise.
I had asked, but.
He'd asked, and I forgot to tell him.
You're kidding him.
He had asked for an office manager to handle his AP, and he's having a lot more reporting, and he can kind of go into that, that he's having to do for the state. And so he had asked for a part-time.
Yeah, last year, I had asked for it. The state and federal reporting that they're adding to what we're doing, I think will actually benefit us in the long run, because they're asking every service in America to show how much it costs whenever we leave the station to make one ambulance call. How much does it cost us? Fuel, maintenance, insurance, wages, down to the utilities and everything. Yeah, every single cost, and they break that down per run. And they get an average for the entire country. And what their hopes is, is that they can show the federal government, we're lacking a lot in ground ambulance transport, that we're, we're not paying enough, and we need to increase that. So hopefully that increase will, will filter its way down and increase what our reimbursement is. What's your average number of ambulance runs a month? A month? We generally do about 1750 a year, so.
Wow.
Hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty?
That's, that's a good enough number.
And we did put that in for full-time.
The medical director, is that the ambulance driver, or what is, what?
The medical director is the doctor that we have on staff, that he signs off on all of our protocols. He has to sign off all of our medications that we buy to stock on the ambulance. And ultimately, he is the one that's responsible for everything that we do.
That's Dr. Cressy, and he's done it for years.
Oh, wow, okay, okay.
And so if y'all will look on page 17, we have the capital expenditures for the fire department. The first thing is a rollover from 2024. Some equipment that Gary has on order hasn't come in yet. He doesn't anticipate it coming in by the end of the year, so we'll end up having to pay for that in 2025. So we included that on there. Then he has listed, let me go over to his sheet, LifePak 335. It's to replace two of his oldest heart monitors on the ambulance. Auto extraction reels, hoses and equipment, fire hoses, nozzles and equipment, a training facility that he's wanting to set up, which he can explain to you, and then a thermal drone.
So first, the, the LifePak 35s. Right now, we're using LifePak 15s, and this is, the LifePak 35 is a, is a device that I've been waiting for, to come out for some time. The average lifespan of our heart monitors is seven years. And our newest one is 10 years old. And the two that I am proposing that we replace are the first generation of LifePak 15s that they no longer service or make parts for. Right now, they do still function, but I'm wanting to avoid the likelihood of a catastrophic failure at the wrong time.
Thank you.
And same way, whenever we're looking at the fire hose and equipment budget as well, that a lot of the fire hose that we're replacing is 40-plus years old. It was made back in the 70s and 80s. And as that, as that equipment ages, we're just, we're much more likely to have some kind of catastrophic failure. And that's just not something that, safety-wise, we can really afford to rent.
Yeah, I feel like if Terry's used the equipment, we need to get some new equipment. If it's been that long. What about the training facility?
The training facility, and that might be a bit of a stretch. We're looking at getting some shipping containers.
Okay, yeah.
And we have enough of us that are, that can do the work ourselves to put them together. Shipping containers are widely used for training centers all over the United States. It's kind of the new thing, they use shipping containers for everything now. But Bella Vista just put in a new one. NFPA 1403 regulates the, the building of these container facilities to be used as burn facilities. Now, one thing I want to stress is this would not be a burn facility. Whenever you're talking about a burn facility, that is something that has to be professionally built by a company that builds them to the NFPA 1403 spec, and this is not something like that.
This would be like a meeting place?
This, no, this will be a, we will be able to do everything in this except light a match. We can still, we can still put smoke with fog machines and such in there, and we can put people in the environment that they're going to be in. And that's what we're lacking here, and lacked here for a long time, is whenever we sit down and train, we, we sit around a round table and we.
Talk.
We talk, and we talk through it. But to actually put people in the environment that they're going to be in, they can still spray water, they can still do everything that, that, for real, except there's just no heat. The ones that are made for that are, you're looking at anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars. And I, we can't afford that, and, and I can't justify that.
You still send firemen down to Camden or someplace similar?
We send, we haven't sent anybody to Camden in a while. We do send a few to OSU, Oklahoma State University. Camden, they only do one class a year, as far as rookie school. And if it doesn't align with the people that I have that are ready to go, then, then we, we do a lot of things, we try to do a lot of things a lot more locally. Rogers has a nice training facility, and they offer Arkansas Fire Academy classes, as do most of the area departments, including ours, and we do host our own classes as well. We have six, maybe seven, that are Arkansas Fire Academy Instructor Twos, and then a handful of Instructor Ones, and we have one Instructor Three.
But no area burn facility?
The closest, there's no, none that's, that would be open to other departments. A lot of the departments, especially once you get over in the corridor, they do have their own burn facilities, but it's their burn facility, and unless there is an academy-led class, it's for their use only.
Where are you going to put the container?
What we're planning on doing is at Station 7 on 23 South, behind the station.
Good spot. Lots of room down there.
Yeah. And then last on the list was the thermal drone. We've been using a drone now for a couple of years, but it, one of our guys, it's his own personal drone. We really use it a lot for inspections, we use it for fire investigation. It has been used on live fires, it does really well, but it's not a thermal drone. And like I said, it's his own personal drone. And $9,500 is what we're asking for that. The Arkansas passed a law several years ago that says that you can no longer buy a Chinese-made drone, so that really limits us to the brands of drones that we are able to look at purchasing. And this one came out several months ago. It's based on the same technology as DJI, but they bought the technology, and it's made in the United States.
Who's going to operate that drone?
The person that is operating it currently, James Cowan, the fire marshal.
So he's, so he's not a, he's not a, an online fireman? He's, he doesn't pack out and go in?
He will, we all will if we need to.
Well, if I'm.
But he, he generally, no, he's not. But he, he generally, no. He's not one of the ones that would pack out and go in. And then myself, I'm also, I'm a licensed pilot as well, but I'll, I have to go back and get the endorsement on my license to get the Part One oh seven. And we've also had a couple of others that have expressed interest in doing the same.
So are all of the people that will run the drone certified then?
They will be. We will have to be. There's no.
Is that expense covered in here?
I'm sorry?
So is that expense to go through that training or to?
It is, it's a very minimal cost. It's a hundred and fifty dollars to take the test and we already own the test prep that was kind of given to us.
It's a little bit of a hard test.
So it's, like I said, it's a minimal cost that we can.
It is, but is it in the budget?
It'll get absorbed into our education budget.
Okay.
Chief, I'm going to take a liberty here if you guys will bear with me. I don't think I've ever actually met you, so it's good to see you. And for the members around the table here, we see EMS and ambulance go by and we're like, oh, I hope everybody's okay. I don't know if any of us at this table have actually ever had to use our EMS service, thank goodness. However, on November ninth, my mother did. Broke her neck in three places. Your guys were phenomenal, saved her life within about five minutes. So I personally want to thank you. I wish I could see every person that was there that placed a hand on her, but thank God she's alive because of you guys. So thank you.
Well, I'm very proud to hear that and I'm proud to hear that you had such a good experience. We strive to make every patient the most important one at the time.
I've had a couple of good experiences with the EMS guys.
How many bad ones?
No, none. Had a lot of bad experience, but it wasn't that.
Anybody else have any questions for Gary?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. What we got up next? Fire EMS. Any questions on the building department?
Looks like we got two guys working there now?
We do. We have, Paul is working full-time and Jess is working full-time as his assistant.
So is this like where the city inspector is? Yeah? And Paul is the city inspector?
Paul is the building inspector. Right.
And code enforcement.
And what?
Code enforcement as well.
Building codes.
Code, yeah.
Yeah. Building and zoning codes and.
Grease tread.
Jess is helping out.
Grease tread.
Is Jess the one from Berryville? Didn't we have somebody helping from Berryville from there?
I'm sorry, what?
No, you're thinking of Ed. Ed was the part-time.
Oh, Ed was the part-time from, he was helping us out from Berryville.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I think Paul should come introduce himself. I haven't met him either.
I don't see any training on their, in their budget.
Travel education dues.
Oh, one fifteen fifty-five thirty. Fifty-five hundred dollars for travel education dues.
All right.
So in this particular budget, we've only spent ninety so far from one twenty-seven, but then we bumped it up forty thousand. Is there a reason for that? I see a lot of them are like, you know, quite a bit more than what we have spent versus, and even budgeted last, you know, in twenty twenty-four.
Like in our original budget for twenty twenty-four under salary and wages, we only had the building inspector. Then Jess started helping Jacob. So she was moved half into his department. And then now she's full-time in his department. So that's what's taken that up. Like under employee health and health insurance, you know, we had some budgeted there, but now we've got two full-time people and it's about six hundred and fifty bucks a month, I think, for insurance.
I'm thinking more like the, even just the telephone, two hundred bucks a month and then now the new ones, three thousand. And then the IT services, we've spent nine hundred.
Don't forget that two.
You know, I mean, this is not a two-person thing.
Right.
About two hundred dollars a month was, that was just the end of the tenth month.
I thought that was year-to-date.
There's two more.
Yeah, that was year-to-date.
Yeah, that's year-to-date.
What you have in there is you have, you have a telephone for Paul and you have an iPad for Paul. And then under the IT services, the thing that's bumping that up is the Civic Plus, the new website. He has those modules that are in there.
Yeah.
And those just basically came on board in twenty-four. And so that's what's jumping him up for twenty-five is those, the building modules.
Yeah, that explains really all that there. Yeah, okay.
And the year-to-date ends at ten thirty-one because we haven't had the last two months of the year yet.
Yeah, but still, that's not, that's, you know, seventy percent of the year already, you know. But yeah, I got you. Okay, thank you.
The next is the city clerk budget. And it's pretty level with the previous year, not much change there. If y'all have any questions for her. Planning is also the same. It's pretty close to what it was last year. Just some changes in the health insurance and taxes and things like that. Pretty much we left it the same. Cassie's kind of new to that department, so we kind of left it at what Kyle had. And then if she finds that she needs some things, we can change it at mid-year.
So who is over that department?
Cassie.
Cassie Dishman. She's the new planning and HDC person that took over from Kyle when Kyle left.
Kathy or Cassie?
Cassie.
Cassie.
C-A-S-S-I-E.
Can she come introduce herself too?
Yeah.
I think we need a party or something. At Wonder Room.
And then the next department is the cemetery and it's just the wages for the cemetery employees.
So across the board, did every city employee get a raise or will?
Five percent.
Theoretically, theoretically, it is a cost of living and we.
And then a two percent merit.
Okay.
We budget that in there.
Okay, yeah.
Now, we've been doing the merit for about the last three years.
Okay.
Or four years.
Okay. Yeah.
Actually, the council sets the cost of living allowance.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you look at the code, it's right in there with getting the report from the police department. We set the cost of living allowance for, for.
I'm just glad it's happening, if you know what I mean.
And then that way Simon can do street and water at the same time. So at this point, let's skip onto page twenty-seven and we'll do transit because Smitty's here and then we can go back and do streets and water with Simon. So twenty-seven begins the transit budget. And it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine and part of thirty.
Do you have a full house of employees?
No.
No?
Still short drivers.
Oh, no.
We just, after our homes, we did lay off seasonal employees, but when we get back in the season, I'm still looking for drivers. And talking to my operations manager, we're going to work on some ways to kind of get some drivers come in.
Yeah.
Basically, train them to get their CDL and pay them while we're training them to get the, before we didn't do that. Because you go to a driving school, it's thirty-five hundred dollars to train to get a CDL.
It costs thirty-five hundred dollars to get a CDL? Wow, okay.
So we're going to train them ourselves and pay them while we're training them before we didn't do that. So we're trying to get some more interest, get some more drivers.
Yeah, yeah. Good luck. It's hard out there.
Overtime last year killed us because we wanted to keep seven-day service, but
Yeah.
we didn't have the drivers. So guys wanted overtime, so we gave it to them. So
Yeah.
but we didn't want to drive them too much. So they get tired.
So are we eliminating the on-demand service?
No.
We're not? Okay.
Looking at the numbers, character expenses and the fare revenue, fare revenue was about, fare box revenue is about thirty-nine percent.
Okay.
The feds look at twenty-five percent, usually is what they'd be a good number. So it was well above what the feds require. So I think we're going to start again probably April. And we still do Friday and Saturday nights.
On Smitty's, if you'll go to page thirty, you'll see his capital expenditures there. He is proposing ninety thousand dollars to purchase a new tram, of which we will, we will pay the whole ninety thousand for that.
That's a tram, yes.
The tram. Then he's also proposing two new trolleys. They're two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars apiece, which is the five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Out of that, we will be paying one hundred percent of one of those and the other one, he will get eighty percent reimbursed on it. So we'll only be paying twenty percent of it.
Correct. I did request funding for two trolleys, but I was told I only get funding for one. Because the funding requests went above what the feds actually don't give us. So they said you can have one trolley and they're allowing me to buy the second one with our funds. So they'll still be, still be tracked with the state interest, but not federal interest. They go through what's called the TAMS, Transit Asset and Management System. So they'll keep track of them, but the feds won't have any interest on that one. We buy completely.
I remember when you came and talked about the budget for that. Are these both electric, the trolleys or?
No, they're actually be gasoline.
Okay. Is it the tram that's going?
Tram is going to be electric.
Okay.
Right. Electric trolleys are a million bucks apiece.
Paul, this funding that we're coming up with is coming out of your department?
Right. Through our, our, our revenue, tram to your sales, parking lot sales and federal assistance, I don't need nothing from the city.
You're pretty comfortable with it.
And the CARES Act has helped us. You know, we have a pretty good bank account in our account and I kind of feel bad holding on to it, so I'm going to start spending it. Once the state and asked them about it, they said, well, it's your money, spend it on, so we're going to, we're buying the tram, we're buying the trolley ourselves and.
And if you'll look on page twenty-seven, which is the revenue for the transit department, starting at eighty-five oh oh forty-one twenty through forty-one twenty-two, those are his reimbursements that he gets from the highway department, from the Arkansas Highway Department for his capital and for his preventive maintenances. So that's, that's the reimbursements that he'll be getting.
And the reimbursement in the past, they have, when I submit a budget to them, their budget includes all, also the reimbursement that I would get for what I request. And so at the end of, when I finish that budget, I know pretty much what I'm requesting from the feds, but it didn't take into account the CARES Act. So I don't know if you adjusted that budget or not, but I requested so much from them, but I got a lot more. And the reason I got a lot more was the CARES Act. But like I said, that's being used up. Next year, I expect everything to go back to the fifty-fifty split with the operations and eighty-twenty for admin.
And we had adjusted twenty-four for that CARES Act money. If you'll, that's kind of like if you'll see in forty-one twenty, it was eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Now we're going down to six hundred thousand. That's to take out that CARES Act money and be more on the realistic on the reimbursement.
That's probably closer what's going to be this year. Unless they come up with something else to fund a hundred percent. Our preventive maintenance is going to be a hundred percent this year. So that's the American reimbursement, no, American infrastructure reimbursement.
That's the twenty-two five.
American Infrastructure Reinvestment Act. We get a hundred percent.
You know, that's a lot of work to stay on top of that too. So.
Yeah.
Good job on all of that.
And I report to the state. They have, I have a dedicated program manager down there. And basically the state is the recipient. We're the sub-recipient. So the state makes sure we adhere to all federal regulations. And they're, they visit me five or six times a year.
Nice. What is on-demand? Somebody gets on the bus and pays?
On-demand is something we started, excuse me, got a little frog in my throat. An request for something evening, late evening.
Oh, yeah.
And basically on-demand is you call, they come pick you up.
Is that what?
Sort of like an Uber lift. And it's something that the state feds do allow us to do now. So if this does take off, they want to see me buy a dedicated vehicle for on-demand. Right now, we're using one of the vans we use for share ride. But if we, if we continue that, they'll want us, they want us to buy a dedicated vehicle for that.
Wow.
That could be, that could be an automobile.
That could be an automobile, a bigger van. I think one time we carried six people at once, so had some, a van of some type, you know.
So somebody gets off work, they call you and.
Yeah.
Drop them at a certain point?
Right. Looking at, looking at the ridership, we, we track where they, where they pick them up at, where they're going. Most of them are visitors to our city.
Oh, wow.
When Passion Play gets out, they call us, we go to Passion Play, take them to their hotel. Or they're downtown late and they go back to the hotel. We have a few locals that took advantage of it, just not very many. But I'm hoping more locals will take advantage of it.
We were hoping that the locals would utilize this more, especially in the evenings and during the season because of parking. But we found out that mostly, a lot of it's the visitors that have tended to use it more than the locals.
I remember when this all came about earlier in the year, have we like put it in the paper that locals have advantage? We did?
Everything we offer is open to everybody. We can't be selective.
Sure.
No, I get that. I just thought for the locals to take more advantage of it, especially those that live outside of Eureka, how far out can you go?
With on-demand, it's within the city limits. Now, our on-demand service, we, we take, well, we took somebody to Fayetteville today. So they have a doctor's appointment, take people to the regional airport in Fayetteville.
For the on-demand?
That's not on-demand. No. On-demand stays in the city limits.
So you go to the airport with on-demand?
No, not on-demand.
Okay.
That's the demand response, which is, if you look at the feds, they got kind of categories for everything and it has to look this way. Demand response, they have to make a reservation the day before, at least the day before, for a ride here and there. And, you know, it's curb-to-curb service. On-demand, it says, I'm here, I need to go here. Okay, we'll be right there.
What, what do you charge to take somebody to the airport?
It's eight dollars for the first twenty-five miles and it's a dollar a mile after that. Most fare is about thirty dollars to go to the airport over in Lowell.
Harry.
Why are you?
That's cheap.
That is.
Get up at three o'clock in the morning to do?
Well, we can if we, if somebody needs to, you know.
They have.
Most, most of the time, we go eight-thirty to four-thirty, but if somebody has an early morning flight, we ask the drivers, they may want to get up and take them and somebody go, I'll do it. And, you know, or doctor's appointment.
They just get their, paid their regular hourly wage.
Yeah.
Driver does.
So for this thirty-dollar trip, how much are we paying for it to actually happen?
I'm sorry?
For this thirty-dollar one-way trip to the airport, how much is it actually costing us to run that thirty-dollar fare?
Fuel and the driver's wage, which takes him two hours to get back. So, you know, we're not making money on it.
That was my question, yeah.
But, you know, public transportation.
Requires you to do it.
Yeah, there's no, no transportation company in the nation who makes money. They require federal help. And so, but we, like I mentioned earlier, with the fare box revenue ratio, you know, they like to see at least twenty-five percent of our revenue of the expenses. And with our fixture outs, we're about right there.
I think the city council is probably not aware, but we should be real proud of our transit because we're the only transit, at least that I know of in the state of Arkansas, maybe almost the nation, that is self-supported. In other words, all other transits, Fayetteville, Little Rock are supplemented by the cities. that is self-supporting. In other words, all other transits, Fayetteville, Little Rock, are supplemented by the cities.
Yeah, they have a
We don't contribute anything. They're self-supporting through their own contributions.
Yeah, Little Rock has a tax revenue. Ozark Regional has a tax revenue. Razorback Transit requires student activity fees. Pay a student activity fee, part of it goes to Razorback Transit.
And a lot of that comes from our trams and trolleys and stuff. So I think we're very fortunate that for a town of twenty-two hundred people, we're able to have public transportation like this and able to offer a thirty-dollar trip to the airport. Yeah.
Trying to undercut me.
What's that? We're not getting a prize.
You're out of business, buddy.
Kind of looks like it.
It just gives another option, basically.
Good to have options.
I'm good with transit.
Anybody else have anything for transit?
No.
Smitty, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
So now we go back to page fourteen, which is the Street Department, and that'll be Simon.
So maintenance on sidewalks is up to eighty thousand?
Right. I knew, I was hoping you'd ask about that. So what that's for is to replace the boardwalk up on French Street that goes up from Hal, up French. That boardwalk is very dangerous, so I want to replace it. We're looking at a couple different options. I did get a quote to do it in concrete, stamped concrete with, like, cast iron railing, you know. It was about eighty thousand. But we're, the mayor and I are talking about us doing it in the synthetic engineered wood. So it won't rot out.
Is that going up Magnolia? Is that what you're talking about, up around
Yeah.
to Fairmont, that?
Right, yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay.
That's one that's been needing
Yeah.
repairs for years.
Pre-rough.
It looks like you got enough money for a sidewalk on East Mountain.
Is that where it would come out? Is that sidewalk budget there, the eighty?
The sidewalk, that's for over there by Hal Spring, that wooden boardwalk.
Just dedicated to that. Okay. Where is the budget for the, for any other sidewalk?
That's it.
That's it? Gloria.
Well, also you have in the revenue in ten oh oh forty-five oh three, grant state aid, eighty thousand dollars. That's to complete the sidewalk by the
Community center.
Yes. And you'll see on ten oh oh fifty-five ninety-one on the next page, the state grant expense of eighty thousand. That's, Simon thinks it's going to be a hundred percent. So eighty percent, eighty thousand to build it and eighty thousand reimbursed from
It's federal.
Our doc, yeah.
Yeah, federal funds.
Say that again. That's for the, that's for the completion of the sidewalk? Is that from Plainor Hill Parking Lot to the community center?
No, that's from, essentially from the funeral home to the community center.
Finishing that. You want to go into the construction business, Terry?
Huh? No.
Go into the construction business?
No, I'm too old for that, but really, I appreciate the offer.
Looking at the cost.
You looking for a partner or what?
No, not me.
Where do you want it to go, Terry?
Huh?
Where do you want the sidewalk to go?
Well, I mean, I don't mind it being there, but it's just, I hate that it's not going from there all the way to Plainor Hill. You know, that still is just an extension to nowhere.
We still have that one. That's, we're trying, what's the status of that?
So the last tap grant that I applied for was over there where the roundabouts going, to try to tie up some loose ends over there that we were approved for. We have to wait for that construction to start till that, that'll probably be part of that project. But the next tap grant, we'll try to extend it out towards Pivot Rock. I could do that. We just have to use, spend the funds that we've already been
I read an article where the state was getting a huge amount, or they were releasing a huge amount for, I think it's actual federal money, that they're getting for, you know, highway improvements and all that, that part of that deal that's going towards sidewalks and bike trails and was, I mean, it was a large sum of money I read about the other day. But I think the state's already split it up.
I'm sure, yeah.
You know, it's, you know, people getting five hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks, of course, they're building them in places, you know, they can get, they could build a mile of sidewalk for five hundred thousand dollars. You know, that's, which, we can't.
The other thing in the Streets Department is ten oh oh fifty-eight hundred. Since it is a capital, or since it is an enterprise fund, they, we fund their capital expenditures out of there. So Simon has asked for a mini excavator and a trailer for around a hundred thousand dollars. And so you see back on the front, the ten oh oh forty forty, that's our injection of capital, a hundred thousand dollars to pay for that.
Where are the streetlights going? Or is that just for, like, light bulbs?
It's electricity.
For what?
Electricity to run the streetlights.
Oh, okay. So that wouldn't fall under utilities?
We have it separated out between utilities and a streetlight.
Oh, that's a question I'd like to ask. There's a place in town where citizens have petitioned and had their streetlights removed. So you can't walk down those streets at night because you can't see.
I'm probably not the one to ask about streetlights. I'm not a fan of streetlights. You see that bubble where it illuminates and you can't see anything outside of that bubble? And I'm just, I just don't, don't like them, so.
You can see the bubble ahead of you and you're in the street, so you can kind of walk to see that, yeah. It does help. But I know if I signed a petition to get rid of the streetlight that's shining into my house, the neighbors would get upset.
Did you put up all the Christmas lights?
I'd like to take credit for it all, but no, I did not. CAPC had a huge hand in that, as well as Parks Department, so.
Anyway, as far as the cost, the utilities for streetlights, it's so much a light, right?
I, so what they do is they bill it as, they don't bill it at individual lights. They just send me a bill every month that says this is how much it is. So I don't really, I don't really have any record or knowledge right off the top of my head about how many we have and how much they charge for each one. I'm not, not a hundred percent sure.
I think that's right, because, you know, if you, if you're at home and you pay for a light out there that comes on at night and goes off in daylight, it's, it's X amount of dollars per month. It's
Yeah, that's
It's not metered.
What's your professional services for?
Be engineering, things like that, yeah.
Yeah. I was wondering why it went up so much.
We're going to need it.
Agreed. Well, I commend you. It went down, so. Your budget.
I try to leave everything as flat as possible this year. You'll see that coming up in the water and sewer budgets. I look at it flat. And we all know that we're doing a lot of work right now in the water sewer departments. But we still have the mid-year budget adjustment coming up, so we'll be able to better figure out what kind of revenue that we have coming in and these bigger projects that are coming up, what costs are those? And then we'll be able to adjust that budget at that time.
Nice. Thank you.
Okay, so then next would be the water sewer, and that's going to be on, starting on page twenty-two.
Question about Water Department. We have a beginning balance. We got X number of dollars in the bank. Is that, is that what that means?
It was from pull over from twenty twenty-four. We, that's more of an accounting plug figure that we have that's based off of I and I money, different monies that we have in the thing. This year, we're not putting anything into the beginning fund balance.
Okay.
Simon, what is a capacity fee?
So the capacity fee is for the wastewater side of things. So it's based off the municipal code in the utilities section. So what it says is, so you want to build a house, right? There's a fee associated with that for the capacity of our sewer system, the upgrade to our plant or the piping, you know, the mains, whatever. I don't really know what the history is behind that and how that was established. But that, we base that off of pretty much what you're building. The soup shack trailer, they just connected to our sewer system, or they're connecting to our sewer system. It was only like seventy-five dollars. Now, you build an apartment house, it has multiple units, it goes up from there. It could be a thousand dollars or more.
What some call it, impact fee?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Are we or will we be charging more reconnect fees this next year?
Reconnect as far as water.
This says wastewater here.
I don't think we're charging more. We may be having more
More people doing it?
People moving in, more houses, or meters, is what that is. Simon, do we need to pass an ordinance to eliminate the turning off people's water while they leave town for the winter and
No, it's already in the municipal code. So in our municipal code, the only exception for not paying your base, your base water sewer trash rate is if the house is being demolished. It's not going to be there anymore.
Okay.
So, or if it's irrigation meter, you can have it shut off and I have to pay the minimum on that one. But the rest of them, the municipal code requires that the owner, renter, whoever holds the account, they have to continue paying on their, for their minimum service.
Okay.
When is our water rate study going to come out?
I was, I was hoping it was going to be this month.
Me, too.
Yeah, everything's just kind of been pushed back a little bit. Right now, Zane is working on some infrastructure numbers because of the depreciation of our assets, our lines and inventory that we have as far as our infrastructure goes. So we're, it's kind of, he's got a lot on his plate right now, so.
So the, um, the tierating infrastructure is going to be included in the, his official price adjustment number?
Yeah, correct. But that's going to be only for water sewer infrastructure. So, like, the water lines under the ground that you don't see, they have a shelf life, if you will, serviceability life. And what we have to look at is when that was installed versus how long we expect it to last. And then come up with a replacement
Yeah.
program to start replacing those lines, you know, every thirty or forty years, whatever the case might be. But we're working, so all of my plan sheets that I had for the years and, you know, hundreds of years of Eureka Springs are actually at McClellan Engineering in Fayetteville right now. They're digitalizing everything. And they're going through the plans one at a time to try to figure out what was installed when. And that way, we could come up with a better plan on attack and infrastructure in the future.
Awesome. Awesome. That makes me feel really good, because I thought it was just, just rate study. I didn't realize that we were taking all that into consideration, so.
I see that you haven't increased the disposal of sludge cost.
We didn't. And like I said, we're going to do a mid-year adjustment. There's no doubt about it.
It's a couple dump loads, dump truck loads a day now, so.
Yeah, and we're, we're making some adjustments at the sewer plant right now. We're dumping two dump truck loads of sludge a day. And I think that we're kind of exceeding our disposal amount, and we're not carrying enough sludge over. So what we're, what we're talking about doing is maybe reducing that down to one truckload a day coming out of the sewer plant. That way, we could keep sludge, because our, the sludge basin has to, it's a biological, you know, living organism in itself. So we have to have sludge in there for food, for the, for the bugs that are in there. And if we take all the sludge out of there, then, you know, we're not going to have that. So once we get the aeration in the system and all that stuff, we'll, we'll probably reduce the amount of sludge we waste unless we actually have to do two truckloads a day and reduce it down to at least just one truckload a day, five days a week.
So the sludge comes from the SBRs to the sludge basin?
That's correct.
So it's, it's already got bugs in it?
Yeah.
We hope.
So over the last few weeks, we've been pumping a lot of sludge out of the SBR basins and dropping those sludge blankets down because of the upcoming, you know, we don't, we don't know when the loan will come in for the repairs to the wastewater station. And part of that's cleaning out those SBRs. But we went ahead and dropped those sludge blankets down. And we've, just to make sure that we're able to process all that sludge that's coming out of there. Because historically, we've had a hard time keeping up with the sludge.
Right.
I, myself, and the wastewater plant, we've done a lot of work on the belt press. And we've got it running at a hundred percent right now. It's putting out so much sludge that it's just unreal how much sludge we're pulling out of that thing right now. So we're just going to have to tone it back a little bit, I think, and drop it down instead of two trucks a day to one truck a day. And that way, we'll free up an extra man to do maintenance stuff around the, around the plant, too. So I think it'll be a win-win situation.
Are you fully staffed?
So I have one extra person, a position in the budget, that I have not filled. And the reason I haven't filled it was I just haven't received any great applications. You know, I don't want to just fill the position with a warm body. I need to really find somebody that's a good fit for the crew that we have and the work that we do. And we're just trying to make sure we fill it with the right person.
Sounds good. Protect your culture.
And so on the rate study, we have been having bi-weekly meetings almost with Dan and them. He and I had a separate meeting last week where we went over all of these income figures. And these are a combination of what I had come up with and what he had come up with. And then we kind of talked them out, and this is where we landed on the income figures. So these income figures are coming from the rate study. It's not completed yet. But these are income figures that I did get from him with the rate study, so.
Mr. Mayor, are we, are we still going to try and get this committee together to with Michael and, and so we can work on the
Increases?
Yeah, the increases and how we're going to try and fund that and, you know, what we need to do, different avenues to try and pay for the improvements and that we had talked about doing before.
Right.
I mean, is that really going to happen, or is it just?
No, Zane and I and Simon talked about that. And Zane wanted to wait until we got some more information back before we got the committee, because right now, there's things that are still up in the air. And so until we can find exactly what the design's going to be in working with the consultant that we had from Springdale. So that's still on, that we'll get together with the commission or the council and Zane and Simon and go through that.
This is the committee we talked about before about
And also based upon what he has found in the rate study so far, he doesn't feel like we will need to look at another rate increase until maybe in the fall of next year. So he thinks that the rate increase that we just did
Next year, twenty-five?
Yes, yeah. He felt like
A year away.
Yeah, he felt like that the rate increase we've done now will hold us, sustain us through quite a while.
I would, I would still like to get this committee together and see if we can come up with some plan that where maybe we don't have to do that, or maybe it could be postponed longer than that. I mean, there's got to be some stuff out there, some, some money available to us somewhere.
Well, Terry, I think we're dealing with professionals that are dealing with this almost on a daily basis.
I'm sure, I'm sure that's right.
Until they can get all the information together. Zane felt that it wasn't, it'd be a waste of our time to get to do anything at this point. Now, we're not saying that we're not going to do it, but Zane felt, and I can tell he got more information in with Simon and them, that
Okay.
We're not going to do it, but we're still going to do it. Just not saying we're not.
Did you do any good with money down in Little Rock? Just you guys? Y'all went to Little Rock, right?
No, we ended up in a Zoom meeting that was half a morning and we did not get put on the agenda for some reason. It was a last minute thing. So Zane has spoke to them again. They have everything that they need and we're supposed to be on their January.
January, I see.
Yeah, their January agenda.
So it's going to come back again in January?
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but going back to what Terry was saying about this committee, I thought, so I just want to clarify for, for me, the committee was to look at maybe viable ways to help pay for these increases outside of just the citizens of Eureka and whether Zane says, and we now, as we were going to have an increase at the end of the year, another one in spring. Now he's saying that he thinks what we've done will be okay until fall, but do we want to wait until that happens or do we want to have a, something in place beforehand, which really wouldn't have anything to do with Zane? It's just kind of a precaution that we're not putting out a fire when we say, okay, another increase. Is that, is that what you were talking about?
Well, that, that's what basically what I'm talking about, but until we really kind of have a handle on, you know, what we need, I, I don't know how we would go speak with anybody about it without having something concrete in our hand and saying, hey, look, this is what we need.
I agree. I'm just a what-if person.
And that's what I'm saying, until we, until Zane and the engineers come up with this.
I wish we could, you know, but that's.
Okay. And, but I wanted to, I guess, verify that we were on the same page of.
I think so.
Intent of the meeting or the committee.
I think so.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to ask Simon, I mean, we, we already know a lot of things that we're going to have to do. We're going to have to do some smoke testing to find out where the rats and the runoff water are getting into the sewer line because the sewer plant will overflow again because of, we get a nine or 10 inch rain in a few hours, it could happen and that needs to be done. We don't want to pollute the people downstream. That's going to cost $100,000. I, I would think we would have that in our budget now.
Yeah, I didn't put that in the budget yet because we still don't know really what the impact is of that 25% increase that we just did. And that's where that mid-year adjustment's going to come in. And we're still waiting for the state letter to tell us what we need to do. So ADQ is kind of dragging their feet on a few things and I don't want to just arbitrarily start a bunch of projects without trying to tackle what they really want us to tackle. And, you know, we, we're looking at the, the committee issue and if we don't know what we need funding wise off the rate analysis, there's no reason to have a committee to, to say, well, we don't, we don't know exactly what kind of funding we need, but how are we going to raise that money? You know, because we might not need anything.
I was thinking of priorities.
Yeah, but yeah, we're, we're, you know, we can only do so many things.
What's it going to cost to clean the SBRs now?
We don't even know that yet. I'm guessing it's going to be the tune of $100,000 each side, but that'll be part of that bigger project that comes up with that six, six and a half million dollar funding from the, from the ANRC if we receive that.
And we'll have to do it in the next couple of months, right? When tourism is down?
It is a project that needs to happen over the winter months, but if we have the funding or not is, is the biggest question of all. We can't just clean out the SBRs without a new headworks, you know, to, to do trash and grit removal because if we do the clean out of the SBRs, we're just going to be back in the same position we're in right now. So, you know, it's all, it, it all has to fall in, you know, in sequence in, in our operations. So it just, um, I mean, even the, the sludge storage basin, I put a trash catch, I was out there with J.L. Bryson today. We put a new trash catch just on that, just to keep the trash out of that basin, you know, and, and just trying to do what we can to use it without contaminating it, which you go out there and you see there's rags and stuff in there already, you know, but we're, we're, we're going to be trying to fish those out as much as we can, problems but, from happening, but yeah.
So how accurate is your budget, not knowing what Zane's going to bring back?
That's a great question. I think you probably know as well as I do. We just don't know. That's why I kind of left it flat. I do know with the increase of revenue that we're going to have some money, the money stream coming in. How much that's going to impact us, it remains to be seen kind of because December's our first month. Once we have a better idea of what, what we have coming in, we'll be able to modify that budget a little bit different, you know, especially come mid-year and, and adjust it to fit. Just knowing that we're going to have some money in savings is huge for me because we have a lot of projects coming up and, and a lot of little things just happen all the time, you know, that cost us money. And having a savings account that we can fall back on for right now is, to me, is very important.
Yeah, the little things, but it's, it's this big elephant in the room that we're talking about.
And once we get that loan, you know, there's, there's money that we have to pay towards loan. We don't know how much those payments are going to be yet and how that's going to impact our budgets and all that kind of stuff. So we're, you know, we're, I'm just trying to keep it in a holding pattern for right now. We'll get this year kicked off and then, and then make those adjustments later on down the road.
Well, I know that we're going to have to spend a lot of money on water and sewer, sewer lines, water lines, the plant. I would think that we should do some austerity measures in the rest of the budget and save the taxpayers a little bit of money.
Ms. Lane?
Are we talking about Water Department?
Could you speak in the microphone a little bit?
Yes. The, I guess my main question is, under the Water Department expenditures, the INI, it's half of what it was going to be? Are we sure we want to do that?
So. So what, so how we, how we budget the INI is if you go up and into the income portion of it, we have 240,000, we're estimating $240,000 coming in, which is on page 22, 80, 21, 4391. So we're, our income that we have coming in from infrastructure improvement is 240,000. We break that out between the two of water. You'll see 80, 21, 58, 27 is 120,000 and then 80, 22, 58, 27 is the other 120. So we're saying we're going to spend all of that income that's coming in. Anything in additional that we spend in INI will come out of our INI reserves.
Okay. Thank you.
Pretty popular right now, Simon.
Better than being infamous, I guess, so I'll take that.
Yeah, your budget's only the five pager here, so.
We do have two other capital expenditures because once again, the Water Department is an enterprise fund, so they fund their own capital expenditures through them. On line 80, 20, oh, I'm sorry, on page 23, 80, 21, 5800 is $45,000 to buy an F-250 pickup.
Yeah, with a service bid.
And then on page 24, 80, 22, 5800, capital expenditures to buy an F-150 pickup of $35,000. So the only two equipment pieces that he has purchasing are the two trucks.
Now, keep in mind, I did budget that much for the trucks, but Michael is the vehicle savior and we have not spent that full amount on any trucks that we've bought so far. We've bought used trucks. I think the truck I'm driving, the old, the little Maverick, I love that thing, by the way, Michael, thank you. But, um, I think, what do we pay, 28?
We, we budgeted 35,000 and we got it for 27.
Yeah, so it's all wheel drive, it's crew cab, I can store my stuff in the backseat. It's great.
Right. I've been really proud of the vehicle purchases that we've done in the last few years, really across the board for all of them, so.
Honestly, we've worked really hard at trying to make every dime stretch on those vehicles as far as, especially in Simon's department because he needs so many, you know. It would be nice if we had $200,000 and could just go out and buy him four or five new trucks, but we don't have that. So Simon, Simon has worked really hard, I worked really hard. We, we send a lot of Auto Trader back and forth to each other to look at this and look at that. And so, you know, we have tried really hard to, to.
Well, it shows.
Send our money as wisely as we can on those vehicles.
It shows.
Yeah, I have, so Michael and Simon have done a great job on finding the vehicles for them.
Yeah, I've been really impressed. I mean, where we started was absolutely horrible. They were so broken down.
Rusty.
Yeah, rust, literally, just rusted out. So it's nice.
And we have new ones now that don't have the doors being held by bungee cords.
That's right.
Wow!
Or frames that might fall in two.
Oh, yay.
Okay, and so if you don't have any more questions for Simon, you'll see on the very last page at 25, the overall budget, our 2024 amended budget, which is in the kind of the yellow color, was 2.9, oh, I'm sorry, it's 20, it's the next page. You got to go past transit, I'm sorry. That was, that was Simon's budget. On the last page, on page 30, our overall budget for 2024 was 13.4 million in revenue and 13 million in expenditures for around a profit of 376,000. This year for 2025, we're proposing a budget of 12.8 million of revenue and 12.5, almost 12.6 of expenditures for a difference of $269,320.60. So we've lowered it about a half million to a million dollars.
Okay.
Good job.
Does anybody have anything else for Simon?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You want to go ahead and, we've still got time to do our regular monthly budget for October. Does everybody have a copy of their October budget?
Should be a new one that you just got.
Yeah, yeah, there we go. September's the last one.
Let me see, is Kim?
Yeah, that's the one, September. I got a voice.
This is the most recent.
I'm going to copy it on the printer. It printed up, do you think it was a printer? I'm going to have to pick it up.
Thanks, sir.
Nah, well, kinda, yeah, but I wanted to talk about it. That's all right. You got it.
David?
Okay, so this is our October budget package. A couple of these, I went ahead and updated some additional numbers in since this is our last meeting of the year of numbers that I did have. So if you look on the first page on our sales tax comparison, what we'll be looking at is the October number of $296,210, which was $17,000 over 2023. I also went ahead and included our November number in there because we have got that. In November of '23, we had 311 and in 2024, we had 313. That's a total of $1,667 more. So for the year, we're up $103,516.06 over 2023 for an increase of 3.54%. The next page is just our, kind of our graphs to show you how that we compared year over year from '22 to '23 to '24. Then we have our October. Let's see, let's go to the second page. We'll go, page three is, is what we collected in August, remitted to the state in September and we received in October. And then if you look at the next one, this is what we collected in September, remitted to the state in October, we got in November. Will show you that we put $233,000 in the general fund, $54,000 into streets, $58,000 into parks and the remainder of our bond payment of $21,000, $25,000. On the next page, we also did this on the sales tax collected on our, the actual detail. So you can see that in October, we collected $59,000 in food and beverage, $80,000 in lodging and $221 in all other taxes for a total of 361. In November, we took $71,000 for food and beverage, $90,000 for lodging and $220,000 for other for a total of 382. We're hovering at that 16, 22 and 62% with 16% being food and beverage, 22% being lodging and 62% being all other taxes. The next few pages is the detail behind that. So if you'll go to page 24, this is our revenue and expenditure report as of October 31st of 2024. You can see that our total revenue through this point of 2024 is $9.7 million and our expenditures are $10.8 million. So that's for a loss of $1,137,000. But if you go down to the bottom, you'll see the injections of capital to purchase the capital expenditures and to help support the Water Department. So when you put in all of our capital expenditures, we actually are at a gain this year over there being a loss. The next few pages are the detail behind that page. So just kind of the breakout of all the different departments. I'm sorry, I'm running through this kind of fast. If anybody has any questions, just kind of holler. I know we're trying to hurry. On page 47, we've completed most of our capital expenditures. We have purchased the majority of the computer equipment for the upgrade for the city. The Fire Department, he has done most of his capital improvements. The police, the building, the truck we bought there, the streets, there's Simon's new work truck for 27,000, his Baco. He spent 141,000 instead of 185, like we had budgeted. Water and sewer, we did take out that one truck there. And transit, those are the things, the items that he has purchased so far and completed. Page 48 is our month end balances of where our cash is. We finished the month of October with 5.2 million in liquid cash and seven, of course, our 770,000 in our CDs for 5.9 million, almost 6 million in cash. And we're hovering right at that $6 million mark. Page 49 is our just month-to-month comparison. The bank. And page 50, you'll see that we did make our October payment on the bond. So our next payment that we have is in April of 2025, which will be an interest payment of $5,952.60. And then our next principal payment will be 10, 1 of 25. So we have two more full interest payments, I mean, two full more principal payments and then one small principal payment. That shows our balance. One thing I did add to these, in case y'all wanted to go back and look at them, if you'll see over here on the last column where it says the GL number, that's the, the detail from the revenue and expenditures report that shows you where those numbers come from. Our solar lease project, same thing. And then our investments, all of our CDs are tied up until the first of '25. The last page, 51 of 51, we, I was able to fill this out for our, what we've purchased in our water. Our water purchases had pretty much been going down. We did go up a little bit in the water for October that we paid for the first of November. So that did go up a little bit. And then these are billing months that show you what, how much we build for water, how much we build for sewer, how much for INI and the total amount billed. And then out at the edge is what we have billed to Grassy Knott. amount billed. And then out at the edge is what we have billed to Grassy Knob for their water in the tan. So I went through that super, super quick. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? All right. That will, we'll take a short break here, a little five, eight-minute break, and then reconvene at six o'clock. Thank you, Michael.